Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission for DeKalb, Illinois. This is Monday, November 20, 2023. Can we start with roll call, please?
Becker?
Here.
O'Flaherty?
Here.
Pena Graham? Stoker? Wright? McMahon?
Here.
Maxwell?
Here.
Four presents.
Thank you. We'll move to the approval of the agenda. If there are any additions or deletions, if not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
I'll move.
So moved. So motion by Becker may have a second.
I'll second.
Second by O'Flaherty. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those same sign. We go to the approval of the minutes from November 6, 2023. Again, if there are any additions, deletions, or corrections, if not, I will ask for a motion to approve.
I approve. I motion that we approve the minutes from the meeting of November 6 as presented.
So moved by McMahon may have a second.
Second.
Second by Becker. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those same sign. Thank you very much. This is the public participation portion of the meeting. If anyone has anything that they would like to speak to that is not on the agenda, you may step forward now. If not, we will move on to new business. We have a public hearing, a petition by Dr. Jeffrey Frank for approval of a variance to the United Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the 30-foot minimum rear yard setback to 20 feet in order to accommodate their, a new medical office building for the property located at 3201 Commerce Drive. Presentation. Would you like to step forward?
Yes.
Would you like to state your name and address?
My business address or my personal?
Either, I guess.
Okay. Dr. Jeffrey Frank, 257 DeKalb Avenue, Sycamore, Illinois 6017.
Thank you.
Proceed.
Yeah, just.
Okay. Do you want me to stand here?
Yeah, right there.
All right. So, good evening, everyone. Anyone else? So, my wife, Kristy, and I have worked in the Sycamore-DeKalb area for over 20 years now, and we have a, we've outgrown our space where we're currently located, and we're both eye doctors, and we have been looking for land for quite a while, and we found this land here on Commerce Drive, right next to Resource Bank. Currently, we do, we did purchase the land and own it currently, and we plan to break ground sometime next year, either March or April of next year, and we, with the plans to move in on the start of 2025. We're asking for this variance for one main reason. The, we see all walks of life, but we do see a lot of geriatric patients, and we also see a lot of disabled patients, such as Opportunity House and things like that, where they need easy access to the building. And if, the reason we're proposing this is it will allow nine spots, as you see there in the front, for easy access for those patients. The, this, so the main reason we're asking for this move here is for these, is really for these, for this parking, and it will actually allow for the square footage that we're looking for. What you see is almost 6,000 square feet. If you go north, just two, both of those buildings are 6,000 square feet currently now, two, okay? Those two buildings are 6,000 square feet. So it would be in the same size. The one thing that's different about my lot that we're finding versus those other two lots is our lot is not totally rectangular. So this lot kind of, for whatever reason, when they did it, it kind of, it's not a total square. So that's why we're asking for just a 10-foot variance there. We do, we will not affect, we do not have any plans to affect anybody behind us. We're not affecting, we're going to do, we have ordinance with the city, but we also have an ordinance there for landscaping, not ordinance, we also have rules for there that we have to abide by for landscaping and other things. We're not planning to do anything that is not allowed by the state of DeKalb for lighting, so we will make sure that the lights don't affect anyone behind us. We're, we're very big on that. And, the, as far as the trees go, I don't think the trees are going, as you can see, going to touch the building, so we're, there's no plans of removing any trees or anything like that. You know, I don't know if any shrubs are going to be hitting anything where it would be just trimmed, but there's no plans of taking any trees down or anything like that. That's basically the presentation. I, if you, what questions or concerns you might have for me, I'm more than willing to answer. I'm working with an architect, actually from Iowa on this, but they do them all over the country. He only works on eye doctor practices, and he, he's, he is aware of all the ordinances and has been working with Mr. Olson to make sure that we do all of that. Any questions, any concerns?
We'll come to that shortly. If we could move, you can have a seat for a second if you'd like, and then if we could move to the staff report.
Yes. Thank you. As Dr. Frank mentioned, looking at a lot on Commerce Drive and Bethany Road, it's part of a subdivision, commercial subdivision, including lots to the north also. They submitted a plan to show about a 6,000-square-foot building, and they're dealing with some setbacks that's required even in the subdivision plat for the lot or the UDO. We do require between commercial and residential, there's a single-family development to the west, as you can see there, homes. A 30-foot setback for a building is required between commercial and residential. So they did some layouts initially, showing the 30-foot setback, as you can see here in this, one of the previous layouts of the 6,000-square-foot building. As you can see, there's also setbacks along Commerce Drive of 40 feet for the building, Bethany Road of 50 feet, 10 foot on the north side, and then 30 foot on the rear. So they laid out a building, meeting all the setbacks required, all the parking setbacks, and they ended up with only four parking spaces in front, as Dr. Frank mentioned. The type of patients they have, they need a lot of parking in front of the building for convenience for the patients, so. They asked about maybe reducing the setback on the rear. They also laid out a plan that showed a 30-foot, meeting all the setbacks, having nine spaces in front of the building. That reduced the building by 1,000 square feet. And as Dr. Frank mentioned, the buildings to the north, both these medical office here and the business professional office here are about 6,000, 6,200 square feet. So, as you can see, the lot has narrowed down as it approaches Bethany Road, so it is kind of pinched. It's not a perfect square, so. The staff, we thought there was a hardship here based on the shape of the lot, and also the need to get adequate parking in front and still meet the setbacks. So there's, reducing the setback is only the 30-foot setback, just by 10 feet, they'll be able to get the parking they want in front of it. This shows some of the, we do also require screening when there's commercial next to residential, and it sits by privacy fence and landscaping, too. As you can see, there's some existing landscaping. That shows a corner block looking at the lot there. You can see a big tree line, evergreens, other landscaping, looking west to the subdivision, so it's a pretty good tree line there, and a couple of the homes do have fences on their lot already. This lot here, and this lot here does have a, it says eight-foot, I believe, it's eight or six-foot eye fence, but according to survey, that's what's there. This parcel does not have a fence in the backyard, they have quite a bit of landscaping. So when they apply for a permit, they're going to have to provide some additional landscape buffering or fencing where there's not, to meet that screening requirement. So looking at the standards for the variance, looked at, can it make a reasonable return on the property? Going to be focused on the 30-foot setback results in only four parking spaces in front, which is not good for a medical office, according to testimony from Dr. Frank. I indicate they have another significant number of elderly patients that benefit greatly from having parking in front of the building. Hardship, the lot is not square. It does narrow down towards Bethany Road, which pinches the available building footprint a bit. They do show a site that meets the setbacks and has nine parking in front, but that reduces their building 1,000 square feet, 1,000 less than the other two buildings, which are in the same subdivision, have the same setbacks come over. So that is a detriment on the applicant, to have a square footage of a building similar to his neighbors, which are on the same subdivision. So we felt the commissioner met the hardship requirements for variance and are recommending approval. We did receive some letters of support. Charles Cronauer, owner of the townhomes, across the road. Some photos. This is a photo from the adjacent residential looking east to the site. Can't really see if it's behind the house. These are our photos at night, looking at the lot to the west. So we received a couple of letters of support from the townhomes down here, from Charles Cronauer, 558 Bethany, Michael Bailey, owner of a home at 550 Bethany, and from Richard Katz on behalf of Resource Bank, which is directly east of the lot right there, 555 Bethany Road. Since the agenda was posted, we have a public response form from Allen &amp; Jane School from 3220 Meadow Trail. That is this home right there. And there's a copy in front of you tonight, and Mrs. School is here tonight, but indicating it wouldn't disrupt the view from their home. Would remove some of the trees. I would note, no trees will be removed with the proposed building, concerned about parking lot lighting, and also others, but they do object to the variance request. So that happens for you. So, again, variances are decided by the commission, it's not a recommendation. We prepared a sample motion that approves the variance per the exhibit, which is the site time you see there, showing the 20-foot setback and nine parking spaces in front. So, the variance is strongly for that 10 feet. The parking meets all the ordinance requirements, there's no variance for that portion.
And we, we don't have any further question?
Mrs. School, I think filled one out right there.
Yeah. Do I need to say one?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you'd like to forward, you can just stick your name and address, please.
Okay. Jane School, 3220 Meadow Trail, east in DeKalb. We don't have an objection to a medical office building behind us. We've just been lucky for 20 years of living there not to have one. My concern is property values. There's a reason for the 30-foot minimum, and the, the buffering. When I measure the trees, I think Kathy and her husband on the corner are not around, so I don't know if you got a response from them, but they haven't been home for the last week. They might be on vacation or something. But their trees, when I measure their trees, they come out 30 feet and would be touching the building. As far as my trees, I've got arboritees, so those would be okay. We would, we're concerned about lights in parking lot, but you said that that's going to be addressed. So my concern is just having a building that much closer, that it can affect property values and possibly need to shear or remove the trees from the corner, which really buffered the Bethany Road noise, which has gotten worse since it's forelaid. It's, I just would rather look at a building 10 feet further back, and I didn't know if moving your building north gets in a double lane of parking on the south end could still get you the nine spaces.
I don't know if I can answer.
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So, I talked to the architect, in case you were going to ask that. So if I go north, first off, my building is going to be more, right now, you'll be seeing a parking lot. You won't even see my building, so you know.
Well, I'll still see, I'll still see some of it, but not much.
Pretty much nothing. If I move north, according to the architect, it's going to, my, you, my building's going to be right in front of your house, and it will not save me the, I'll still lose 1,000 square feet. So it will be a five, it would be a 5,000, and I will not gain the parking spots either. I, I'm still losing it, because they, they looked at that. I don't, I could get you, you guys specifics on why that is, but I know for a fact, it would be worse off for her, though, if we did that. At least right now, she won't be, according to the architect, you will not be looking at the building pretty much at all, maybe a little bit in the corner, but I don't know.
And as mentioned, here's a tree showing, based on the survey, where they're generally located, so you can see the parking of the building here will not touch that.
Yeah.
Area, and they do have to fill in, if there's a gap, with some additional landscaping. There's a fence on the school property, eight foot, I believe, or is it six?
Six.
Six. A little setback off the lot line, but you see the parking would be closest, and, so lighting here, I mean, the commission can make conditions with a variance if you choose about less. There's a range you have to have for commercial, too, there's five-point foot candles, that's the intensity of the lighting. One can make, you can write it down, the lower lighting, that range should be focused at the north parking lot if you choose, but again, the corner of the building, and there's the school's lot line right there, there'll be additional screening required there for landscaping, so. And if they did push a building north, they would just look out the back of the building, and I don't think it would help with the parking situation.
It would.
They had all the parking down at the south end, and wanted parking closest. It looks like there's an employee for their employees to come back here, and of course the patients, and then additional visitor parking, patient parking. So, usually in a site like this, and you can see the other ones, you have parking kind of evenly distributed around the building, you don't really push it too far, where you have a lot of distant parking.
Appreciate your comment. Thanks.
There's anyone else that would like to speak to this? If not, I will close the public hearing. We're going to open it up for conversation by the commissioner.
I have one question. You're back here, is it possible to just take this building and shift it, same as I built it, but just rotate it so that you got your 30 feet in the back of the parking lot? Maybe you just have a little less lawn space. I think you could take that same building and just tilt it over, give the same footprint, and then you have your 30 feet, you have your same building, and I don't think that will affect your parking spots, it would just affect your green lawn on top of your, just, I'm just using the, this grid here.
It would, it would affect, I understand what you're saying. I think it would work for half of the building, I don't think it works for the lower half is the issue.
The lower half?
Yeah, so.
Just that way? Meaning you physically couldn't pick it up, lift it, and turn it diagonally to match the parking spaces right now without affecting the bottom? Because you're, you're creating a wedge in the middle of the architecture of the building in order to extend it out over that green space right now?
Yeah, as mentioned, I think all the layouts have been in the building generally, that location, just a matter of it's 30 foot or 20 feet back, folks on the parking, as Mr. Frank said, I mean, you can plug in others, but their architect specializes in medical offices, so they've done a lot of these, that end up working best for the doctor and the patients, so.
There's enough, I don't, I personally agree with you. I don't like that landscaping totally there, to be honest. I'm just being honest with you, but I, there's also some rules within, that's not DeKalb, City of DeKalb, there's rules that Herbert Katz and Richard Katz put in place for that subdivision, and even though the corp, even though that's dissolved, according to my lawyer, I still have to abide by them. So I don't know if that's part of that rule there. I know we have to have, like, at least 20, excuse me, 20 feet of landscaping in the front, so I don't know if that's totally out there, 20 feet, or if the combination makes it 20 feet. Do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, thinking about private covenants for the subdivision, not regulated by the city, but private covenants for the medical, for the subdivision for the commercial buildings there. Sounds like they have a 20-foot green space in front.
Yeah.
Which your architect knew and drew it this way to leave that requirement?
Yeah. So, I, I don't know that the 10 feet would make much difference from looking at it as far as how it would relate to the residents behind there and viewer viewing, but you both have talked a little bit about lighting, and with regard to property values, I think one of the important things is that the residents who are backing up you, you know, don't have parking lot lighting passing over into their backyards, and then, you know, that could have some sort of impact on property values. So my, my question of that is, is that a part of your building? Yeah, so. To accommodate that. Yeah, well, according to Dan, he was telling me that there's rules on that already put in place by the city of DeKalb. Am I not correct?
Yeah, you have to have a certain foot candle, J2 and 5, intensity of light for any commercial development. That's the average spread out over the site, so some areas you could have a little less lighting, some a little bit more, but it'd be lighting similar to what's the other two commercial buildings out there or any other commercials. So, lighting has to be, there's max height, it's got to be shoebox, it's got to shine downward, not horizontally. So as I mentioned in the beginning, you can, the conditions are indicating that you prefer to have the lower range of the lighting up in this area, the north parking lot, for the staff's review or just some general direction on that, and we can work when they get to that stage of laying out the lighting with their.
And to be fair, not just to Mrs. School, but, I mean, if you're going to do that, you might as well do it on the other side, too, because there's people right there, too. It's not fair to do it for, just.
Realistically, I mean, what would be the hours of operation normally?
I could tell you, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, nine to five. Tuesday, Thursday is nine to seven. Saturday is eight to two.
But majority of the employees would be parking, I would presume, in the, the south portion of the lots to the left, toward the back of the building, leaving the majority of the parking out front, open to customers.
Correct.
So the lighting in there wouldn't be necessarily, I mean, for whatever the lowest possible lighting rating is, it wouldn't be necessary to have it as normally lit as you would a commercial lot where you've got traffic going in and out all the time.
Correct. Correct. I mean, they're going to have to be, some type, light should be downward, it should not go to, into their thing like he was saying. I was talking to the architect about this quite extensively, and he was telling me that they'll make sure, this is not the first time they've dealt with this, and they'll make sure that where they butt up to a residence and, you know, to have lighting there. One question I had, which I still need clarification from somebody, and I, I don't think it relates, but I think it will make a difference, is, I know, I just built, on a side note, I just built a new house where I live in North Aurora, and I put those lights that are in the roof lines all the way around, which do not go far out, but it, around the building, it really, it doesn't bother the, wouldn't bother the neighbors, but it's really good at bringing lights horizontally down, and it lights up around it, so maybe I wouldn't need as much lighting out there. I was thinking, you see it everywhere now, I mean, if you look at, like.
Yeah, unfamiliar. But I'm guessing, again, for a commercial development, there's a standard for X amount of parking spaces based on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And lighting is, is a range, so.
Yeah, so. But we can, we can, it can be lower intensity, but the, the amount of lights, I think, required.
Yeah, you can suggest lower intensity, between the building or parking and the residential area.
And honestly, I mean, I've seen the set line a thousand times, because I've driven by it, too, but I mean, between the, the amount of evergreens that are there now and whatever, I think you could accomplish with landscaping, specifically for tech houses behind you, so that it may become transparent if they, you know, do something tall enough.
The, can the light, lighting be off when nobody's there, and then it saves electricity? And, because I, we don't see any lights from the other medical office buildings, and I would want it saved for your staff.
Yeah.
When, you know, when it's dark, they would at least have the light to get in their cars, but then when no one's there, why would you light it?
Yeah, it would save us energy costs, and it would save the, it would, I would think it would be fine. Once again, I don't, the lights in the parking lot, I would say yes. I don't know if, the light that lights the building itself, I don't, if we do that.
Well, if there's a six-foot fence around that, I don't, you can see much of it anyway, again, with all the shrubs, I mean, it's assumed that you're going to have some type of safety light or something.
Yeah.
So that's not completely dark, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's a given. You want residential, you'd have lights on.
But to answer your question, yes, I assume we could do something like that, and I don't know.
Yeah, as long as you're within the lighting range, I think, you know, and it shines downward, but you want some little security behind the building.
Yeah. I, I don't want, I know.
For safety.
I mean, I had patients that were affected by some of these solar things, and they told me what a nightmare it was. I, I, I don't want to affect her house or any other house, it's not my goal. So, so it would be stupid for me to want that. So, so yes, to answer your question. The only question, the only thing I want to make sure, though, is, is, I understand the light has to be dimmer, I just want to make sure, and I don't know what that number is that you're talking about, but I just want to make sure people can see their, to go to their cars.
Yeah, and I'm sure whatever the minimum is adequate.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I don't know the numbers, so I, I have no idea.
Yeah, they'll be able to.
That's all I ask.
No, I wrote it into the motion.
I mean, because you guys also have to understand, we do have people that have eye diseases, I'm an eye doctor, so we have people that have eye diseases that have some night blindness issues, too, so. So they, lighting will be, it's not just for me, it will be for my patients, too.
Understandable.
Yeah.
And it's a commercial property.
Yeah.
Okay. Did you ever think that?
No.
If not, can I make a motion? Can you motion to approve?
I am, I've gotten an attention to it, so. Based on submitted petition, testimony presented, and findings of fact, I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission approve variance, which article 5.07.042, 04.2C of the Unified Development Ordinance to reduce the 30-foot minimum rear yard setback to 20 feet in order to accommodate a new medical office building, shown in Exhibit A, Exhibit A, 102423, with lot lighting at lower ranges, consistent with rules relative to commercial properties abutting residential properties.
So moved. May I have a second?
I second.
Second by O'Flaherty. May I have a roll call, please?
Becker?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hey, thank you.
We have a second item tonight, a public hearing, a petition by Bobby Perez for approval of an amendment to ordinance 2017, 415, approval of special use permit to allow a retail tobacco store at 650 Peace Road. Would you like to cover it?
Yes. Hold on, let me switch.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Good evening, guys. My name is Bobby Perez. My business is at 650 North Peace Road.
And my name is Katerina Carrick. I'm Bobby's attorney, and we are here to, on the request for a rezoning petition, as well as a special use application. As you see here, the subject property is highlighted in yellow. It is in the northeast quarter of Pleasant Street and Northeast Road. It is a, it's in a planned development industrial zoning district. It is a, it's in a planned development industrial zoning district. It currently consists of a multi-tenant property. There are, I believe, seven units there right now, and it is utilized for a variety of commercial, oh, if you can go back to that, that would be great, yeah. So this is the, the building in question. The specific unit is Unit E. On the lower level is Chicago Cana, and Bobby is proposing a tobacco retail store on the mezzanine level, so second level. The total square footage of Unit E is about 2,500 square feet. Lower level, I believe it's 1,300. Upper level, where the retail tobacco store would be located, is approximately 1,200. The reason why we needed to apply for the special use permit and submit the rezoning petition is because in 2017, an ordinance was passed, 2017-015. It was intended to rezone the site from light industrial to planned development industrial, and the purpose of that rezoning petition was to allow for a medical cannabis dispensary. That use never materialized, but that ordinance is still in effect today, and Bobby, with his proposed use, is subject to that ordinance. The ordinance states that, and I'll provide a citation for it. Section 4.1 states that additional permitted and special uses shall be those as listed in light industrial district. One of those uses is tobacco retail sales. And also, in addition to that, Section 3, 3J and 3L prohibit tobacco retail sales and also prohibit the sale of drug paraphernalia. And with the proposed use, all of the retail sales are lawful. There's nothing that we're proposing for sales that's illegal. It's standard kind of products that you would see at a retail tobacco store. Some of it can't be used for tobacco, some of it can be used for cannabis. So out of an abundance of caution, we are asking for both restrictions to be removed. And as you see here, this is an image of the retail space. Bobby has been getting it kind of prepared and set up, and it really gives you an idea of how the property or the unit will be laid out.
This is the ground level?
Yeah, that's the lower level, so the, the grow store.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Pots and everything are shelving.
Okay, I apologize for that. I think there are more pictures, though.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's.
That's the mezzanine.
Okay, that's the upstairs. Yeah, so I think, can you just slowly go back to the other pictures of the upstairs? So that's, that's the upstairs, the, yeah, so these are, just to give you an idea of the type of products that are going to be offered for sale. And I think you had a couple of more pictures there.
On the slides, it should be probably in the packet.
Okay, all right. And on the lower level is Chicago Cana, and they are selling retail products geared towards growth of cannabis, soil, things of that nature. And it's a separate business from Bob's Exotic, which is the name of the business that would be on the second level. Again, all of the items that are being proposed for sale are lawful. A lot of the items that you would see once you walk in are glass products, like quality glass products for marijuana and tobacco use. And I think a big part of what Bobby's trying to do is educate the public, so his, part of his mission is to make sure the public is aware of the variety of products, you know, know the good from the bad, and really kind of be in the community and be there as a resource. I know that the, one of the conditions that are, that's stated in the recommendation includes submit, submitting or citing an agreement, safety plan with the police department. He is open to that and willing to participate and do what needs to be done in order to make sure that his business is protected, his customers are protected, surrounding owners are, their interests are protected as well. He wants to be a good neighbor. And just briefly, if I may, he needs the criteria for the special use permit and for the rezoning petition. I will just briefly go over that, if I may. So on the special use permit application, the property or the proposed use will comply with all provisions of the applicable district regulations. He will comply with retail tobacco, sales of tobacco and related products of the UDO. He'll also comply with the smoking regulations. There will be a licensing requirement. He'll go through the business licensing process if the request tonight is approved. Also, the proposed special use will not be unreasonably detrimental to the value of other property owners in the neighborhood where the property is located or the public welfare at large. The property is, has been zoned light industrial up until 2017, when it became zoned for P, as PDI. The surrounding properties, you have heavy industrial to the south, light industrial to the north. To the east is vacant land, and to the west, I believe, is.
Is that not the 40?
It's industrial vacant land, too.
Yeah, and then there's a bus company tucked back up in that corner. But pretty much industrial vacant.
Yeah, so the commercial uses are, they're in line with the comprehensive plan, the proposed land use, as identified in the comprehensive plan. Arguably, this use is less intense than some of the other permitted uses. Also, the location and size of the special use, the nature, intensity of the operation, it, it will not dominate the median neighborhood. It is limited to the second level of Unit E, and it's quite discreet, and it's going to be a quiet operation without too much foot traffic. All of the utilities, public services already provided for, and there is adequate parking on site. The proposed use also is consistent with good planning practice and will promote public health safety and general welfare. Again, it's compliance with the comprehensive plan, and he will obtain the tobacco license from the city. There was one letter that I believe the city received from one of the neighbors, Forge, I believe is the neighbor.
Forge Company?
Yeah, Forge Resource Group at 1801 Pleasant Street. And they just seem to have a generic opposition to the sale of drug paraphernalia, but we did not hear any specific complaints regarding, or any inquiries, I guess, regarding the proposed sale of products. And it just seems to be more of a general kind of opposition or concern about the sale of drug paraphernalia. But again, these are uses that would be permitted under retail tobacco sales. We just, out of an abundance of caution, wanted to make sure that restriction on drug paraphernalia was removed as well.
Thank you, thank you. Do you have a staff report?
Yes, staff report, very thorough job by Katerina on this, but I'll just try and highlight some of the issues. Again, it's a two-part amendment, the Planned Development Ordinance that was approved for that lot in 2017, where the medical cannabis dispensary proposed, it went through. But in that ordinance, we did a list of light industrial as uses there. There was a special use, which is retail tobacco store, that would be allowed. And also, there was a list of prohibited uses, a copy of ordinance, it was in the packet. And I would say that we did at that time, previous city attorney and administration, we typically put in a list of prohibited uses in almost every planning development we did, similar to this use. So there was no reason back then that, okay, we definitely want to prohibit retail tobacco stores for some reason, or drug paraphernalia. It was just a list that was kind of commonly put in a lot of planted tobacco stuff. But it was in there, so they had to amend that to remove those two uses and apply for the special use for the retail tobacco store. For retail tobacco stores, we initially, in 2015, created the regulations in the UDO for those. We're going to do another amendment early to this year, 2023, for the, for the defined, modified regulations. Retail tobacco stores is basically where you have retail tobacco products, too, so they're not really selling like cigarettes or cigars, it's retail associated tobacco products, mostly, that's what they're selling, and the drug paraphernalia or related to cannabis sales. So if you have 30 more percent of your revenue or 25% of your floor devoted to tobacco products and accessories, could be products to not just, is that tobacco, cigarettes or cigars that qualifies as a retail tobacco store. It's a special use. We have a couple setbacks, 200 feet from residential, there's no residential in that proximity. 200 feet from another retail tobacco store, there's no retail tobacco store in that area. And smoking is not allowed inside unless it's a pre-standing building. One of the restrictions is there are no smoking inside, so they're not going to be able to do that, they're not proposing to do it, and they'll need to get a tobacco license through the city council per our municipal code, which they will do before they proceed in the tenant space. So the special use standards, Katerina went through those, we believe they're meeting them. Meets the comp plan, commercial use, it's not going to be detrimental to the surrounding area, it's mostly a combination of industrial, commercials, and retail. In that area, there's adequate parking on the lot. Jeff Bridges, the building owner, just came in, if there's going to be any questions for Jeff, he can certainly answer those. So we believe it meets all these special use requirements. It's a pretty low intense type of use. They have a use on the first floor that is permitted use, and they'll just be on the mezzanine of that square footage that was mentioned. So we did receive, as noted, the one public response, one from Lucas Ray, Controller for the Forge Resource Group, 1801 Pleasant Street. Letter indicates they do not support the amendment, special use request, because they believe the sale of drug paraphernalia due to manufacturing facility and housing request could provide, could prove hazardous to the employees and community. I wouldn't know, we did have, they did comment before, when we had a medical cannabis proposal in the building to the north in 2019, they did submit a similar type letter. So aside from that, we did not receive any written comments. So I prepared a sample motion that approves the amendment to the ordinance in 2017 to remove those two prohibited use categories, approves a special use permit for the conditions. They obtained a tobacco license from the city of DeKalb, currently selling those products, no smoking inside the tenant space, and a security plan approved by the DeKalb Police Department.
Thank you. Does anybody else that would like to speak to this? If not, I will close the public hearing and open it up for comments and questions.
No, I mean, we, a couple years ago, we approved an actual potential cannabis dispensary in that general area. I think from an educational perspective, if you can, you know, sort of desensitize the use of cannabis in the area, and provide education towards that, and it's, it's a good thing. So, you know, I don't, I don't see much to oppose to.
I mean, considering this history, I have no difference at all. So ask for a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion. Based on the submitted petition, testimony presented, and findings of fact, I move the Planning and Zoning Commission forward its findings of fact and recommend to the city council approval of an amendment to ordinance 2017-015 to delete from Section 4.3 Prohibitive Uses, Item J, which includes drug paraphernalia sales, and Item L, which includes retail tobacco sales for the property located at 650 Peace Road, Unit E. Approval is also recommended for a special use permit for a retail tobacco store where the subject tenant space is shown on Exhibit A and subject to the following. One, the applicant shall obtain a tobacco license for the city of DeKalb prior to the selling of tobacco products. Two, there shall be no smoking in the approved tenant space. And three, a security plan shall be approved by the DeKalb Police Department prior to occupancy.
So moved by O'Flaherty. May I have a second?
A second.
Second by Becker, may I have a roll call please?
Becker?
Yes.
O'Flaherty?
Yes.
McMahon?
Yes.
Maxwell?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Very much. Thank you. And that's it for new business tonight. Do you have a staff report?
Yeah, briefly, next commission meeting, December 4th, at the library. We have the rezonings for Fishwaki Water Recreation District, seven parcels, through this government sanitary district zoning category we created and made for them, so that's the end hearing. Second one, December, will be the 18th, Monday, at the library. We'll have one hearing in the website for Cotton Avenue for a rezoning, single family, two-family, and special use for kind of a labor of the lot size, so. That's it for then. First meeting, January, be the, what's scheduled is the second, it's a Tuesday after New Year's Day, and I think in the past, we, based on the qualifications on, we'll probably look to cancel that one unless there's something comes up, but I think we'll plan, we'll do that, but we'll be one. So again, if, keep up the good work, let us know, Steph and I know you're going to be absent from a meeting, but that's, the schedule looks like we're not going forward.
Okay, thanks, sir. Anything else to add? If not, I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Is it so moved by McMahon, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by O'Flaherty, all of you, if you ever say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all of those same sign.